This conference will now be recorded.
This is the meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees on Tuesday, April 20, 2021. We're meeting in the large meeting room of the main library. This is a partially electronic meeting and is being held as such because a fully in-person meeting is impossible or impractical due to concerns for the health and safety of board members, staff, and the public presented by COVID-19 and to follow the mayor's executive order directing social distancing and placing restrictions on gatherings. My name is Steve Emming, president of the library board of directors, and I'd like to have a roll call now of the trustees that are present. Malavika?
Hi.
Thank you. Judy Lance?
Yeah.
Tom Engelmann?
Here.
Joe Heinrichs?
Present.
Craig Cooper?
Thank you.
Amanda Mato?
Yes.
Thank you. Sylvia Roba? Okay, Sylvia is not here. And Maggie Mato also indicated she would not be able to attend today. So we do have a quorum, and we will proceed with the meeting. We'll have some additional introductions. Let's see. Also, in the meeting today are Laura Guinness, the president of the Friends of the Library Board of Directors, Amy Grosskopf, the library director, Jennifer Williams, operations manager, Lexi Riley, assistant director, Tracy Moore, development director, Casey and Casey Shipley, recorder. And we also have a guest, so to speak, of a new employee, Leslie Ross. And with that, we'll go into the agenda. First item on there, excuse me, the second item after the roll call is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will. I think it's.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Malavika. We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Call for the vote. Malavika?
Yeah.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll go on with the agenda. Reports and communications. First item under this agenda item is the Friends of the Library. Laura, did you have a report?
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. This will be my last report because I have just finished my term as the president of Friends of Davenport Public Library. We held elections during our annual meeting. I don't know if that was last week or two weeks ago. So Jerry Skalik is the new president, and he will be invited to attend these meetings in my place going forward. Although maybe I'll come and join you and just watch us public with comments.
Good.
I thought I might get a little chuckle for that. So I've enjoyed these meetings. I've learned a lot from sitting in on these trustees meetings for the last, I don't know, however many years, it's been five years or whatever. So kind of my final update is obviously we just finished our fiscal year. We did our annual meeting. We elected a pretty completely new slate of officers. We had some continuing on. Frankly, we had a little bit more transition and turnover at the same time than I would have preferred or would have liked, but the organization has some really fresh leadership. I'm looking forward to see what the Friends of Davenport Public Library will do next. We obviously have wrapped up basically the capital campaign, and so that feels like a big success to have that behind us. And obviously, the main location has been renovated and opened downtown. And I guess that's it. Kind of a light report for me, but thank you for welcoming me for these past.
You're welcome, Laura. And thank you very much for your leadership to the Friends and all the Friends and you've done for the Davenport Public Library. We appreciate it very much. Okay, next item under reports and communications are committee reports. Finance committee, Tom, anything there?
No, it just says, if you look at the budget recap for three quarters of the way through the year, and in most categories, we haven't quite hit three quarters of our spending. So I commend management for being careful about, you know, with the flow of spending.
Any questions of Tom on the finance report? Okay, thank you, Tom. Next item, personnel. Amanda, anything from you?
No.
Okay, no report? Great, thank you. Advocacy, Malavika?
I just have to share, I have requested outreach, like, if she could, you know, whenever our house starts going outside, if, you know, she could know the schedule, because I intend, like, you know, kind of, going out and speaking with the house, kind of, you know, trusting the community, kind of, the thing. And so she said she's going to share as events come through. So, just that.
Any questions on the advocacy committee report? Okay, next item on the agenda then is director report. Amy?
Hi. I'm going to start with the two items that we called out as in the agenda. And I would like to introduce Leslie Ross to everyone. Leslie is in the back of the room there. She is our new information services manager and president of St. Ambrose Library. And we're really excited to have her. And so I asked her if she would just share a little bit about some of her background.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Leslie Ross, and as Amy said, I come from St. Ambrose University. I was there for, it's coming up on 16 years. So I am an academic librarian who is going to try her hand at public librarianship, and I'm really thrilled to join this team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
And then I asked Lexi if she would give an update on our diversity, equity, and inclusion team report. And then, because they had their first meeting, and then we are looking for a board member who would like to be a liaison from that committee to the board. So I'll let Lexi go first. I'm so close to them on camera. So, hold on, April 7, we had our first meeting of the diversity, equity, and inclusion team. Six staff members from various departments, the full-time department staff. So we spent an hour just brainstorming and talking about what our ideas are and what areas that we think would be beneficial for us to explore. Lots of great ideas, lots of enthusiasm for the cause. So after the meeting, I kind of grouped our ideas into some broad categories and did a little bit of a survey with the team to identify what our priorities would be. So some of the topics discussed in order priority, the big one was forming better community partnerships, reaching out to groups such as the NAACP, WULAC, QC Pride, and finding out what we can do for them. So, you know, this will help those communities to identify the library as a place that's welcoming to them and also help us to where and how we can better serve its populations. There's also a lot of interest in exploring our policies surrounding fines, fees, and collection agencies, our hiring practices, including requirements for various positions, and how we also can get the word out to a diverse pool of applicants, our policies surrounding library cards and procedures for bringing those into paper hands, staff training and development opportunities, identifying those, and material selection and other collection development tasks. So that would include adverbercy audit of our collections to make sure that our collection is representative of the population it will be served. So based on these topics, I am going to start just drafting some potential goals for our team to be working towards. And we're currently scheduled to meet again on May 19. I'm very excited to put this into action.
Excuse me, any questions for Lexi on the diversity committee?
When do they plan on meeting?
We're meeting monthly at this point. We don't have a consistent meeting date, so I'm just basically going through the calendar and finding dates when every member of the group can meet. With part-time staffing included, which I felt was important, it makes it a little more challenging. So so far, two meetings have been scheduled on each one hour in each of those months, went all about surveying. But probably likely during the day. But I don't know, the easiest way to do that would be if any trustees are interested in being that liaison, if they would email Steve about that.
May I ask, Lexi, approximately what time the meetings would be scheduled, like?
I mean, I think it's going to get four o'clock. And it will be, at this moment in time, it will be zone, is it? We actually decided to have our meeting in person. We thought that would be better for brainstorming. There is spread out pretty well in here, but there could potentially be virtual meetings as well if that was not that.
Lexi, how does this committee that you have formed now fit in with the overall effort to, you know, discuss these issues and make some plans for the future? Because I know when you talked about this before, it sounded like there were a lot of different particular items of interest or, you know, kind of to do things. And so I was wondering, is this going to be one committee or will there be other committees?
Yeah, so this is our main steering committee, and we plan on forming other subcommittees along the way as we're looking at specific topics. So when we talk about collection development, we're going to, you know, want to bring in the librarians and, you know, catalogers who work on those specific things. So we have, you know, some good background information, expertise to, so there are lots of opportunities for staff involvement.
Okay. Just as information, Lexi, just for me to know, let's, like, job, let's put it as job description, board liaison. Can we also share thoughts in, I mean, are we just going to be a liaison taking things and sharing it back to the board? Or are we also able to share anything in the, just like, anything to share?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, you're bringing in another perspective that we certainly love having. Thank.
Any other questions for Lexi? Okay, none. Thank you.
Okay, and then, so just a few things that are not in the report that I sent out. The cafe at Eastern, they were hoping to have their grant opening on May 1, but that's going to be delayed a little bit because they, like us, you know, doing our renovations, they haven't been able to take delivery of some of their, I think, some of their fancy coffee machines and some of that. So they're still waiting on some equipment to arrive. There is a budget amendment that will be going in front of city council. Not this coming cycle, but the first cycle in May, I think. At any rate, soon, that we'll have a few library things on it that reflect some of the position changes that the board has approved during the course of the year. So we have, we have library caretakers now at our branches instead of guard custodians and some of those changes, so that they'll be doing that to reflect that. And then also at an upcoming meeting, they'll have the the CDBG, the Community Development Black Grant funding. They will discuss and approve that for us to, in conjunction with parks, do some summer outreach programming. So the programming that we had intended to do, that the board approved money from a grant project to spend on staff, it looks like what we will do instead, we will be able to use community development black grant funding for that and actually be able to double the number of staff we hire and then double the program. So instead of doing four programs a week, we'll be able to do eight in eight different locations. So we're excited about that, working with some of that. The renovation, we're getting a little further every time you come. So the geographic is on the glass walls in the kids' area today, if you noticed that when you came in. We'll be looking at having the board approve the Phase 2 furnishings purchase in this meeting. And then, once that's done, we'll look at, again, some of those other priorities we have and come to the board with some class and a few more specifics so you can help us set those priorities. Like, do we do Fourth Street landscaping? Can we do some interior plants? Can we figure out a way to, like, do a system on the wall so we can hang art and have, you know, work with Quad City Arts or other organizations to have rotating displays? And then we'll be looking at adding media capabilities in the new meeting room as well. So and then the final thing I have for my report is that I shared with Steve last week, and I handed him a letter today indicating that I plan to retire on or about October 1 of this year.
Thank you for all your great.
So, as you all know, the board is responsible for doing the search for a new director. Jennifer has boxes of materials from the previous director search in her office that she has avoided opening, but. And the city has previously indicated that if the board desired to hire a research firm, that they would fund that. So with that.
We can play this a couple of years.
Yeah.
Well, I can retire.
It seemed like a good time with renovation, pretty much, and we'll be working on a new strategic plan, and so it might be good.
You're giving me two shocks within less than a year.
We'll have that on the next agenda for. Thank you, Amy. Next item.
So this is, I've shared this information well clear with our administrative team earlier in the last week. I sent an email to our supervisory team this morning, but then we'll share with all staff and with city administration after this meeting. So these meetings are all recorded, so it will.
Yeah.
Just announced it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda under reports and communications is city council liaison. I don't think Marion is with us. Nope. So, okay, so we'll move on then to new business. Okay, first item under new business is a motion to approve hiring Watson and Associates to assist with the new library strategic plan. There was information in the packet regarding that, and there were, well, let's go on with the motion. So a motion to approve the hiring of Watson and Associates to assist with the new library strategic plan. They have a motion in that regard? Thank you, Malavika.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Tom. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Yes.
It's something that we really can't wait for a new director on because we need to re-certify with the state. And so we need to have a new plan in place by December of 2021. So we really need to start to process how, or that won't be in place for the recreditation.
Good question. Any other questions? I guess I'd say that there were no other suggestions of other companies to look at, and I don't think it's something we want to do on our own. I have just a little bit of acquaintance perhaps with Watson and Associates. They did some work for my church a long time ago, but it seemed to go very well, I thought. And so certainly would support the motion. The material that was in the packet, I'll have to read, was a little to you, I guess. And so anyway, are there any other questions or discussions regarding this item?
Where are they at?
Right here.
And then in terms of paying for that, so that's an allowable expense from open access from the grant money we get from the state. So that'd be how we would plan to do that.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, call for the vote on the motion to approve hiring of Watson and Associates to assist with the new library strategic plan. Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yeah.
Malavika?
Yeah.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a motion to allow public use of library meeting rooms with capacity limits and cleaning intervals at the discretion of the library director. They have a motion in that regard?
Sure.
Due to COVID-19.
A second.
Unless you have a computer or.
Have a motion in a second to approve the, excuse me, yeah, motion in a second to approve to allow public use of the library meeting rooms with capacity limits and cleaning intervals at the discretion of the library director. Is there any discussion on this item?
I just have a question, Amy. This also applies to the new rooms upstairs that we have.
It would be glass. To the new, so those are study rooms.
Okay.
So we, once we have those completely done, we'll make those available as we have the other study rooms at the branches. So right now, they're available for one hour use.
So this is basically what we have at Eastern and in.
In this room.
And this.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so we're really looking at those larger meeting room spaces. So that's why we're saying that, you know, a capacity of 15 attendees should be able to effectively social distance if they, you know, if they choose to. So that being said, if there are more than 15 people or people are not social distancing and wearing masks, we're not, we're not going to enforce that for outside organizations that come in here and use the meeting room spaces. Because it's just impossible to do that. You'd have to have somebody, you know, at the meeting the whole time. So, but that's also why we want to have a two-hour, a two-hour buffer between meetings. So if there are people in a meeting room space and they are not wearing masks, then that just kind of gives plenty of time for air exchange and things like that before we have a staff member in cleaning and resetting.
So it'll be staff doing the cleanup?
Yes. Yes. The staff always resets the meeting rooms between users. Are these guidelines in addition to general guidelines, or are these like the full, are these just like COVID guidelines for meeting use? But I'm wondering if there's a more general set of meeting or. Yes, there is. Yeah, that's in board policy, the meeting rooms. Yeah, yeah. So this would just be really the COVID restrictions. I wanted to give everybody just an indication of what we're looking at right now in terms of those restrictions.
A few months, they might be adjustable.
Yeah, I mean, everything's probably adjustable, but pretty much anytime needs to be. So.
Okay, there's no other questions or comments. So call for the vote of the motion to allow public use of library meeting rooms with capacity limits and cleaning intervals at the discretion of the library director. Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve purchase of the Phase 2 main library furnishings as part of the main library renovation project in an amount not to exceed $97,137.22 and approval of change order one for the furnishings project. They have a motion in that regard. Okay, thank you, Craig. There a second?
I have second.
Okay, thank you, Malavika. Have a motion in a second to... Is there any discussion?
So I would like someone to make a motion to amend that and suggest the amendment to increase the not to exceed amount to $130,000. The changes are, we actually, we took out some of the furniture because now that we see it all, how it's laid out, there are some things that we just don't think we're going to want. But the total amount goes up because I don't know if you noticed, when you come in the building and you're, if you look towards the public computer area, that taller shelving that's kind of right at the entrance really blocks the staff's view of the public computer area. Initially, when we bid the project, we were kind of running budgets so close, we didn't think we could afford to purchase additional shorter shelving for that collection. But now we know that we can because we came in under budget, and the architect adjusted their fee way down as well because of the adjustment to the overall cost of the project. So that was about a $70,000 savings right there. So we are in great shape financially with the project. So we really think that that's an important thing to do to replace that shelving with some that's shorter so that staff has a better line of sight into that area of the library.
Will the other shelving be repurposed?
We will be able to repurpose at least one of those units, and Lexi's looking at perhaps repurposing another one or two of those units. But we won't be able to repurpose all of it, I believe.
Okay, so I guess the item out there is to amend this motion, amend the amount in this motion, amount not to exceed $97,137.22, amend that to be $130,000.
Twenty-two cents.
And. Made me look. So, let me see. So, okay, so Craig, you made the motion. Would you be okay with that amendment?
I'm going to amend the motion.
Okay, thank you. And Malavika, second, okay with that?
I'm.
So then we have a motion in a second to amend the original motion, which would now read, motion to approve purchase of two, excuse me, of the Phase 2 main library furnishings as part of the library renovation project in an amount not to exceed 97,000, excuse me, not to exceed $130,000, and approval of change order one for the furnishings project. Is there any discussion? I have an item. What is change order one?
So this is really like change order one because the bids have come in, and all that's already been bid. So we would, we would approach that as a change order. Okay, so this would be change order one for the project. Okay, so this would be change order one for the project.
Any other consensus or discussion? Okay, it's time to call for the vote. Joe?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yes.
Thank you. Malavika?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, the motion carries. Oh, we have no other change order?
This is the only change order in the furnishings.
That's right. Yes, that was a motion to amend, so now we will approve that motion or, so may I have a motion to approve the amended motion?
I think we already have that.
So, okay, but we have to approve.
We just have to vote on the amended motion.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm sorry. So, okay, so now we'll have the vote on the, on the motion. Amanda?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion and approval of administrative policies, section one, employment practices and section two, performance expectations. Guess I would like to say upfront that the way I would like to approach this is to is to have discussion on this item now and table the approval until the next meeting. So. Also that regard. I'd appreciate a motion. Appreciate a motion to table this agenda item and then in place of that, we will have discussion on it. Table this until our next meeting. There's such a motion, someone willing to make such a motion? Okay, thank you, Amanda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to table this agenda item until the next meeting and we will replace that with the discussion item portion. Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? Thank you. Call for the vote. Craig?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yeah.
Judy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yeah.
And my own vote is yes, the motion carries. Okay, I guess I'll start off by explaining that. There. It seemed to me that there ought to be an opportunity, or at least have it put out there that it would be a good idea for everyone, as you review these administrative policies to let Amy know of any comments you have and therefore those that are deemed to be valuable to put in can be added or at least we can, if we need be, we can get them out for discussion or at least not discussion so much, but at least awareness of what other people have submitted. But the main point is that then we would have something that if there were any substantial changes that were, you know, about to be beneficial, that they could be rolled in, but at least we could have an opportunity to discuss these items and then have it, and then approve that later. So what we'll need to do now in that regard then would be to discuss sections one and two today and then at our next meeting we'll approve these and at some point in time, we're going to have to double up to be done by June. But we'll kind of play it by ear, by now, for now, but I want to acknowledge Jennifer's, all the work Jennifer's going through to do this, we appreciate that. And we'll work through these as best we can. And also by doing that, if there are any items that, you know, people see that are minor that need to be fixed up, those can be fixed up without having to go through approving them and all that kind of stuff. They could be rolled in at the same time. So anyway, I'd like to then at this time, open the discussion of policy section, administrative policy section number one.
Steve?
Yes.
As we get started on these, I asked Jennifer if she could give the board a really high-level summary of the items that are really changes from what's in the current personnel manual. So we have the, the current board-approved personnel manual and a number of the things, probably the majority of the items that are in here, is it's a reworking of the personnel manual into a new format. So a lot of the content hasn't changed, but Jennifer is going to share those kind of, the policies and then some of the more substantive changes that are, that are made in the board to be aware of.
And thank you for reminding me. Okay, Jennifer, we'll turn it over to you.
So as far as changes in these two sections, there's very few. So in policy one point two, which is the hours and work of scheduling, the major change in that one is the option for staff to choose a 30-minute meal or a 60-minute meal. So previously it was only a 60-minute and that was what the requirement was, so that's the main change on that particular item. So also in policy two, previously for library property, it was originally that first little paragraph, that's all the personnel manual actually indicated. We actually added all the other items underneath of that for specific items within the library as far as governing how staff use those. So all of that would be new.
So is that like two point one through two point twelve?
Two point four. So all the items where it starts with staff use of copier printers, all those specific items, those are all new that didn't previously exist in the personnel manual.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was looking at the table of contents.
Like I say, we're going to hop around because there's not that many major changes in these two particular sections. Policy number two point five, which is the conflict of interest, a new piece that we added into this one is the employee purchase of donated and discarded materials. So we added that, that section into this to kind of govern how staff can purchase those items, especially if they're using it for their own personal use. Then the other major change would be in policy number two point seven, which is the personal appearance. Previously, it was just that first little paragraph as far as personal appearance in the personnel manual. All the guidance underneath that, it would be new to the personnel manual. It previously existed in a document that we had for staff to use, but it wasn't actually in the personnel manual, all the specifics. And then there's the last thing, there's three policies that are completely new to, that weren't previously in the personnel manual and that was two point, or two point eight, which is the internet and email usage. The two point eleven, which is the headphone and earbud usage. And then the last one is two point twelve, which is beverages. Once again, these items existed in a different format, but just weren't a part of the previous personnel manual that we thought was important to put into it now. So those are all the major changes. The rest of it previously existed and just has been cleaned up into these policies.
Okay, then, um, so. So the previous administrative policies or guidelines, do those go away now?
So once we get all of these approved come July one, these policies will replace the personnel manual.
Okay.
Existed.
And then there are also some of these items that would somehow tie back, let me, I ask a question of Amy and and she said that some of these items would also tie back to city policy.
So if we are silent on a particular policies, for instance, you won't see that we have a smoking policy. It's because we're referring back to what the city has because we would just be repeating it. So those are, there's some policies that you won't see.
I just wondered about those being tied together because my question for example, my question for example had to do with the beverages, you know, didn't seem like there were any that were prohibited, but that's apparently where it ties back to the city policy.
Yeah, because the city, the city has administrative policy that governs like alcoholic beverages, that kind of thing, so it's not specifically in our beverages. It's just how we use it and how staff have to do it here, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So I guess there are some connections because that piece about alcohol obviously is a prohibited beverage. It's not in there, it's more so the actions of our staff, the behavior.
Okay. So. There was a. Item one in policy one point four, wages and salary schedules. It says in item one that the board of trustees monitors the job description categories. And I guess, I don't recall that we did that. It would just be my old brain, but is that, how does that work or is that?
And me and Amy kind of chatted about this one yesterday because this is something that was, has been in the personnel manual for probably since it was created that we might just rework that, so it's more of a director down kind of concept versus how it's written now, so we are going to alter that one. Because the board has the responsibility over the library director and then the library director has that direction over the other staff, so we're going to change that slightly.
Under policy two point nine, which is performance evaluation, there's reference to a term trial period. What is, what is a trial period?
So if somebody transitions to another position, they are given a 30-day trial to see if, they like the position and if they work in that position, so that's what the trial period, and so after that, then that supervisor does have a meeting with that staff member to evaluate their performance.
Okay, and just a question on that, that seemed to have been something that caused some difficulties in the past with by delaying the time or extending the time during which a position couldn't be filled because of trial periods. Is that, does that change anywhere in here?
No, that is still the case. We cannot fill it until the trial is over.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have, we have shortened that trial period though and for some positions, we don't use that anymore. Specifically, some of the part-time positions where somebody is transitioning from a 20-hour a week position to a 24 or 25-hour a week position. We're not considering that there needs to be a trial period for that anymore. So, so we have streamlined some of that a little bit.
Guess that's all I have of substance.
I just, I just had one, it's a question, or maybe just for more information. In policy number one point two, under the section scheduling, we do list towards the end, the different departments that we have in, in the library. And at the end, we have, I mean, community outreach and the scheduling. The last one is community outreach, and this is just for my information. Is there a need to mention OWL as well? Because I know OWL comes under community outreach, but there are some other external staff who work, I mean, American volunteers, do they vote there?
She's considered part of that department.
Oh, she's considered, okay, okay. So OWL, so that goes under OWL, so it does need to be a senior. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? On the first two administrative, excuse me, policies? Okay.
So what we can do is then, so we'll make the change that Jennifer mentioned in terms of that, that one particular piece about the job descriptions and, and then Steve had some other really minor changes in terms of like a word missing here, there, things like that. So we'll make those changes and send those out to the board for approval at the next meeting.
Okay.
So, and then.
And the next batch will go out as well?
Yeah, so the next batch, so all of that has already been sent. But so at the next meeting, we'll need to have discussion on all four of the remaining sections so that they can be approved at the June meeting. Right? Or, or did you want to have comments then so that we can make the changes and get updated versions sent out to everybody prior to the next meeting and then it's to begin two sections at a time? So I guess it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we can do that if there's.
Okay.
If, if anybody, if anyone has comments as you're reviewing these, you could let Amy know those and then, you know, if it's word missing, things like that, those could be fixed if, you know, if there's agreement. Some of the things I suggested, I do not excel in style or grammar, but I just, you know, mention things that didn't sound quite right, but and then also if there's more significant things too, we could get those out and for review and for the next meeting. And so, yeah, I'd say if you have comments or anything like that, send them to Amy and that way we can keep this rolling because it is very important. Needs to be done by the first of July, so we need to keep on task and get it ready, so please read on and I think I was pleasantly surprised to find out that, you know, I don't think there's any of these, it was more than two pages and, and two pages and also many of them were, the actual text part was less than half a page, so anyway, keep at it.
See, this is okay, like if we have to share anything with Amy, like these are all word documents that they already have. So is it okay, like, you know, I, I have a question on two point six, let me say, so can I go into that section and fill that, like, and write my name and have a comment so that? You know, I mean, so it's easy, why having a running meeting, I don't think we can post it as a, like as a Google Doc and have people make their comments. I think that's a violation of open meeting law.
Yes. But you can make changes to a document on your computer and then, and then just send me the attachment and then we can see how that lays out.
No, I wasn't thinking of a Google document. I like, you know, it was a zip file that I had sent, so I unzipped the file and I have it as a Word document on my machine. So I was just going to take the, what, like two point six, for example, I was just going to take two point six and what I had to say under that section and send it to you. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's perfect. Yeah, that'll make it really easy to see the content.
Right, 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 right. And there it goes, kind of, that's one. Yep, that'd be great. Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Let me see. I wanted to, I guess, right here at the close, mention just a couple of things, just odds and ends. I guess one is that I wanted to report to you somewhat delayed, but by good reason. Our bylaws say that in the event of an emergency, the executive committee can meet if it's not timely for the full board debate, that the executive committee can meet and approve certain things or certain, can approve things, I don't know that they're mentioned as certain things, but. certain things or certain, can approve things. I don't know that they're mentioned as certain things, but, um, uh, and so, um, in light of Amy's request for the possible, uh, closing of, um, Fairmont, uh, to offer a time for staff to get together, um, in kind of a session to console each other with the loss of, uh, recent loss of one of the library employees. And plus the fact that that person did not want word out about her condition. I, uh, emailed the, uh, other members of the executive committee, Tom and Sylvia, and, uh, inquired of their feelings about that and we approved that. And then, um, I did not report it as was supposed to at the last meeting because of the time had not come for that information to be released yet. Um, so decided to do that, but I'm now reporting that we did take that action on behalf of the board. Um, also wanted to mention that, um, there's an upcoming, distinction missed it in the Monday morning eye opener. Uh, there's an upcoming state library board room series program. Uh, it's a, it's advocacy related, I would say. Um, I believe the date is May twenty-sixth. Uh, and it's called Inspire Your Community With Inspiring Stories. And it's based on a book, um, entitled Inspiring Library Stories: Tales of Kindness, Connection, and Community Impact. So, um, that's out there, just mention it. Um, and, uh, I believe the date is May twenty-sixth, uh, but you can go to that Monday morning eye opener and find it in there. It's either this week's or last week's, but anyway, if you're interested and can't find it, let me know and try to give you some, send you the link to it. Uh, the website to sign up for these classes is, uh, I don't, I haven't found it to be real user friendly yet, but, uh, maybe just, uh, I've figured it out. So, anyway. Um, also, one of the things, we talked about strategic planning and, uh, one of the things we're going to be looking for is ways to engage, uh, through a survey, particularly, I mean, wide range of people, but particularly interested in people who don't use the library. So if you have any thoughts of how to reach out to, uh, groups or agencies that might be able to help us find some of those people and get a survey to them, that would be fantastic. I think that's it. So, since that puts us at the end of the agenda, um, call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom. Second?
Thank you.
Malavika? Thank you. Okay, call for the vote. Uh, Malavika?
Yes.
Thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Thank you. Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. Joe?
No.
Amanda? Craig?
Yeah. And my own vote is yes, but the motion carries. Thank you.
It would be a nice.
One other thing, on the way out, don't miss what's gotta be almost the coolest bookmark ever.
This is really cool.
Yeah.
This is really cool.
It's the front of the library, the old photograph with the lights on in front. Got a little nice thing.